Hi, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the November Village Board meeting. If you could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's not working? We could share Nick's perhaps. We're going to start off tonight with staff reports. Altamont Fire Department, do you have anything extra you'd like to talk to us about?
We're home.
You're back. The trucks are back in. Yay.
The fence is down, the trucks are back.
All right. Excellent. We're making progress. Almost finished. Almost finished. Police Department. Chief Johnson, do you have anything extra?
Not extra.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Public Works?
No.
He always has something.
Jeff always does, yeah.
Not much to report. We're finishing up our hydrant flushing. Hopefully that will be done this week. The guys are up sucking leaves just about every day. I want to ask everybody, if they will, to don't put any sticks or stones in the leaf piles. It doesn't work too well with our machinery. If you can, put it in a windrow instead of one big pile. A lot of places you have to put just one pile, but if you put it in a windrow, it's easier for the guys to pick up. And try to keep it out of the ditches, too, so that it doesn't plug up our drainage. That's about it.
Anybody have questions for Jeff for this month?
No. No, thank you.
No? Okay. We're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the Treasurer's abstract for tonight. And actually, we usually have one abstract to approve, but we actually have two. So I want to start with consider approving the amended Treasurer's abstracts for payment and transfer of funds from October 4th. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Michelle is first, second.
I'll second.
It's Tressa. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy.
In favor. So the second item we're going to be considering is consider approving Treasurer's abstract for payment and transfer of funds from November 1st. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved. I'll second.
All right. So John is first and Nick is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy.
In favor. Okay. I'm moving down to the public comment portion of our evening. If there's somebody in the audience that has something, Laura has something she'd like to share, come on up and tell us who you are and share your info.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Shore, and I'm here on behalf of ACT. I'm president, and I just wanted to bring you up to date on what was happening with the winter event, which we're now calling Winter Fest. The Fall Festival was so incredibly popular and really well-done that we thought it made sense to kind of extend that idea into Winter Fest. There'll be some changes this year for those of you that have been around for a while. We will not be having the train. We haven't had it for a couple of years because of COVID and the crowding. We tried to, we asked them if they could come this year during the day because we felt like it would be a way to, if Santa, we're going to have Santa come to the park instead of being on the train. It'll avoid that bottleneck by the library. It will give the kids a chance during the day to run around and entertain themselves, and it will sort of create a much more fun festive spirit in Orsini Park. So we'll be starting at noon. Santa Mike, who you all know, has agreed to come, and he will lead the pet parade. And the pet parade has gotten bigger and better every year, and we'll promote it. And it will go, just for the police department's benefit, it will go, start in Orsini, go down Main, over to Lincoln, over on J. So it's kind of going backwards from the last couple of years. And then up on Main, back to Orsini. And then Santa will install, oh, and John has agreed to do the bagpipes again, which is, I think, is indispensable in the Altamont Pet Parade. And then Santa will be there until, they'll do the pet photos in Orsini, like the Enterprise, like they've done in the past. I haven't asked him yet, but I'm assuming they will. And we will have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts. St. John's may have a bake sale table. We've got two regular food trucks, a taco truck and a sustainable eats from Vermont. And then the cookie truck, if the roads are clear, will also come. And I talked to Jennifer, who owns the new diner, and she said she'll stay open, you know, throughout the day and do something special for the event. We'll also have the Festival of Trees and the Reeds in Masonic, and that will be kind of like a warm-up station with cider and doughnuts. And then St. John's has agreed to do kids' activities. So what we're trying to do is to spread the crowds out so that we don't have big clusters because we don't really know what COVID's going to be doing come December. And it's more indoors. So it's a more compressed, but I think it's still got a lot of the festive feel that we've come to expect, and it's looking really good. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. I think Kate will be talking with the police department if we can figure out a way to together somehow manage the traffic in that little space around Orsini during the course of this event. It was terrible this summer during the Fall Festival. And so it's just something that we need to work on because there's a lot of kids running around, and we just want to make sure that people are safe. So Judy, do you have a question?
The Living Nativity?
Living Nativity, thank you.
That's a big one.
It's a big one. And that's actually the, kind of the capstone of the event. So people will, you know, the event ends in Orsini at 3:30, and people, you know, will head towards the Living, you know, will head towards the Living Nativity. And I know last year and the year before, the attendance was bigger than it ever had been. And I think part of it was because there was less competition with that. We'll be ending in the Masonic at that same time, so people can really kind of head over there and take advantage of it.
Okay.
Questions? Comments? Anybody? Okay.
Sounds good?
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Oh, come on up.
So we're sort of a group here.
Okay. Sure.
My name is Deborah Marion Katz, and I live on Skahery Plank Road West, number 113. It's my neighbor Heather Fox.
Yep. And I'm at 115 Skahery Plank, next to Deb.
My name's Lindsay Giagni. I'm at 3 Groot Drive.
So I think what we wanted to do tonight is come together as a small group and really express our concerns about the pedestrian crosswalk issue with kids going to school in the morning. Heather had an incident recently where she was almost hit in the crosswalk. And I know we had another experience with a resident in the crosswalk. And as I started, we've started to talk together as a small concerned group, I started doing some research and sharing it with Heather and Lindsay. And to me, it really speaks to a larger environmental issue. And so I wanted to kind of bring up a few of those points tonight and see if there's a possibility that we could form a resident group to work with the village and with our police chief and public safety. You know, as part of the larger issue, we will at some point have high-speed trains coming through the village. Development is inevitable. The face of Altamont is changing to some degree in our surrounding areas with development going in, and that's inevitable. But I think it raises some additional challenges in terms of pedestrian safety, especially with the kids, the kids that live so close to the elementary school. You know, my husband has, he grew up here. He has very fond memories of walking to the elementary school, all the kids with their dogs. The dogs would come back alone to pick up the kids at the end of the school day. And I think that when we listen to the young families that have come into the village specifically for the reasons that we cherish our village, and that's the walkability, the safety, kids being able to ride their bikes. So I think we have a larger issue, and I'm hoping that we can sort of organize together and work collaboratively. There are a number of state and federal programs that help residents to take a look at some of the issues within communities and provide some really good guideposts for working with the community to educate and basically take a multi-prong approach. So that's what we're here for tonight, just to raise those thoughts.
To add to that, I think that our village police do a great job, and it's evident that you guys have more of visibility within the village. So we appreciate that and thank you. But you can't be in all places at once, and I feel like it is a group effort to find out what is available to us, if we can work together to obtain some of these grants, find out what other communities are doing. And then, too, I know that you guys have started some things with DOT, but if the community can help and follow up on that as well, then, you know, we can kind of hit it at all angles. Because the goal, and we all have the same goal, is just to make our community better and make it safer for everyone as well.
Jason, do you want to add anything? I mean, is there anything you can help?
I mean, obviously.
Do you mind coming up here? I'm sorry, people at home won't hear you. They won't hear you from the, out there. Won't pick you up.
So, I mean, as most of you know, if you've attended these meetings over the years since I've taken over as chief, we have kind of spearheaded things in, with DOT in the state. And I did touch base, I did touch base with them again about what's currently being done. I know they increased the signage at the crosswalks that are closest to the schools. I know that they plan on putting amber lights in there. It's more of a technical issue at this point. They're trying to figure out how to best power those. Again, I mean, I do track the community page, so I try to keep ahead of what people are complaining about when it comes to traffic control because that really does help us out. I mean, you guys see things, I mean, people see a police car, and they're going to avoid it. So we all, we always try to, the more intelligence we can gather, the better we can, we can put our, put our resources out there and try to combat it. And we've done, I mean, our ticket production has increased more than 2/3 what it was the two years before over this last year alone. So, and specifically the crosswalk charge, that's a detail I put out periodically because it is kind of like catch-and-smoke. There's not always people, you can sit there and stare at a crosswalk for six hours and nobody, like, that scenario just doesn't unfold all the time. But we really do try to get out there and do that. We've written probably a half dozen just in the last couple of months of that specific, of that specific charge. And, and again, we're always, the community can see and hear things that we don't necessarily always get to see and hear, so we're always, we're always open to any kind of help we can get.
And I will say that we were waiting to hear on a grant that we've, you know, especially trustee Farrakhan had worked on for quite some time, that we may, a big piece of that was pedestrian and traffic safety. We don't know where we're going to land in that grant. We hope to know in a month or so. We may be lucky, we may not. We don't know yet. So that, you know, we have to wait and see on that because that was a big piece of it. You know, I know Michelle's going to talk about this later tonight sometime, just, we're starting to reorganize a comprehensive plan review committee. There may be, this is something where you can, Michelle and John is working with you on this. They could reach out to you all at that time because having a subcommittee for just, you know, looking at what's there now and looking at maybe what updates you might want to see, that might be a good way to incorporate the community input in that area. Those are the things I'm thinking off the top of my head. I'm sure I'll think of more afterwards, but we are, we've been, I know the traffic violations have been a priority for the whole force.
They've been up. I'm trying to better our technology. I've applied for a couple of grants also for plate readers coming in and out of town because that would, that, every, I mean, there's only a few ways in and out of town here. So if something were to happen, God forbid, then we would at least have some, some leads to go off of by using that technology, things of that nature.
Yeah. We really don't see it as a deficiency in any one group or our police department. It was so interesting for me to read some, about some of these programs and the fact that it's really about education, you know? And it's public service announcements, and it's really getting that message out consistently in front of people. And that's a, that's a multi, that's a collaborative effort. That can't just fall upon one organization.
Yeah. I mean, we've had articles in the, in the local paper also. We put the newsletter out, and I try to, we do that periodically also, so just try to keep the education up. But, and I'm, and whether you know it or not, that page probably does help quite a bit.
Yes.
Some people might not appreciate it, but, exactly. So, but, but thanks to you guys for coming up.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So being, this is, sorry, I'm going to get a little, this, a couple of weeks ago, the kids and I almost were done. We were almost done in that crosswalk. We, we were a step away from being really done. And this is why we all kind of came together. There is a very short window of a bunch of kids who walk to school every day and come home. And we really, really, and I know that's not, there's a much larger issue on pedestrian safety, but we need to do something for the school. We are a walking village, and we have so many more kids that could be walking to school. But, I mean, my kids are old enough to walk to school on their own, and there's no way in heck that I could ever, ever let them, being that I was crossing them, and this car was so far away. We practice safety every single day because we walk to school every day. They know what to do. Must have been driving 50 miles per hour down Main Street to even get to the crosswalk at Sand Street where we were. So it was extremely scary, and I don't ever want to encounter that again, and it's to be a problem, you know? So hopefully we can fix and work on this before that happens again because that was the second time in that week that someone actually got hit earlier in the week, so.
Yeah, I know.
And I just, so, they did come and stand there, sat out on Euclid that day in an unmarked car. And as much as I appreciate that, I still think we need to do more because people still don't even see the cop car because it's not marked as a cop car. Two guys went flying right through while the cop was there and while we were standing at the street. So I think it's, we need more, we need a body out there, you know, crosswalking even for the 20 minutes that the kids come and go from school even. I don't know who, where we start with that.
I would, I would actually make a suggestion that you might want to approach the school district because legislature changed it where the school district can pay for a crossing guard years ago. They could not actually financially support that because it is the only, in my opinion, and I work for the schools, community school in that sense. My school I work at is close, but it's still not the same as Altamont. They, you know, they're doing budgeting right now. They're in stage one slash two budgeting at this moment. So I would actually make a request, talk to their officer, you know, Officer Ralston is their SRO, and, you know, maybe he, what? Former officer in Altamont. So he would actually be familiar. So I would reach out to the district office and possibly him as well in, you know, maybe through an email and see if that's something they would fund for this school. And maybe Mr., I'm sure Mr. Robert would be on that as far as supporting it.
I spoke to him right away.
Yeah.
It would have to be an ongoing budget buy-in for them.
Yeah.
They'd have to continually pay for it because it's not something we could really.
We're not staffed for it, unfortunately. We have one person on. If there's an emergency, they'd have to leave.
They'd have to leave. And then if somebody gets hit in a crosswalk, once you, once you establish a crosswalk, I did, like, we, there was a lot of litigation that went on in the city of Dehose because we had 787, we had a highway run through the city that I used to work in, and we had, unfortunately, we did have a couple of deaths there. So it was always, there was always the talk of cross, but they just, once you establish one, if they ever have to leave or call in sick or anything else like that, it becomes a litigative nightmare. So.
This is all great information. I feel like if we consider having a task force put together, we can all rely on each other and our resources. A question that I had to ask you before, too, just because I have no idea, is how we tie into Gilderland and if Gilderland has any resource to help us out here in regard to the speed signs. It's just a lot of things that we just don't know, but if we all work together, maybe we can.
If we request those, they'll put them up periodically, but they move them all the time. They're a big town, so ideally, that's another thing I've been trying to get a grant for is get a couple of those. They are, all those things are great, but they're also very expensive. So it's one of those things.
Do crossing guards have, can they be volunteers?
There is some insurance issues.
That's what I'm wondering.
There's insurance issues. They're supposed to be paid for and trained by the police department.
Okay.
Like, they have to, there's a certain, because you're basically deputizing them for that traffic control for that little bit of time. That's why it's such a, it's a cost overall. It's not just having somebody stand up. It's not just the.
I feel like that particular crosswalk at Lark is one that could be targeted for some immediate actions. I watched what people are doing, and there's that little bump out in the road after they come through the middle of the village.
Yeah, where the parking starts.
Because people have been pretty good about stopping in crosswalks in the middle of the village, but I notice as soon as they pick up speed and come around that curve, which is a little bit of a lack of visibility there with that bump out, the crosswalk's right there. I'm just wondering if that may be part of the problem is just, you know, if there's a cruiser sitting there with lights flashing for 20 minutes in the morning, that's going to sort of create a mind map for these folks who are.
Right. They're going to think they see it and stuff. I mean, and that's why we do get out there and the enforcement that's been going on. We definitely jump from, there's, people complain on all, every different section of the area. So we respond, we try to respond to that a couple hours at a time here and there throughout any given.
So in the meantime, I think on our end, just to move forward a little bit, Michelle, like John, the two of you could probably reach out to you folks, you know, maybe Deb because I have your contact information, too. After the new year, it's, this is when they're going to get started. They're organizing stuff right now. But, you know, touch base with you then about where they're going with this and timelines and things like that. And at the same time, I know, Jason, that you were working with New York State. You've already contacted them about where are the lights that they had talked to us about.
Right.
It's hard to move their timeline sometimes, as we know.
It is, yeah. I was surprised the signs got put in as quickly as.
Yep, yeah, so.
Is there anything in these grants for traffic, like cameras?
Yes, and I've also applied for those, too. It's, I mean, the application process is open right now because they released lots of money for Safe Streets initiatives and things like that.
Sure.
I did put in a litany of things of what'll land. I'm not sure, but I think they're trying to expedite it. And if everything goes well, I should know something one way or another by December, I'm hoping.
And I think they're putting out this money because we're not the only community having these same problems.
No.
This is not, it's not an Altamont issue. It's an everyone issue.
We're competing with other jurisdictions.
For the same things.
That's why you never know what you're going to get. I mean, we do have great stats here so far as high, high traffic control and low crime. So that, unfortunately, that could hurt you.
Doesn't help us.
And grant application, I mean, it's great as a community, but, so, but there's enough money out there, I think that we'll, we'll see something, and I'm hoping to get some stuff.
Okay.
If nothing else, I have the quotes, and if we'll, we'll talk about that at a different time, but if the grant money's out there, I just assume, get it that way. But if, I mean, other than that, we'll chip away at it and try to get, try to get things.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Oh, come on up.
My name's Andrea Parker. I live on Sand Street. I also just quickly came to voice my concerns about the speeding on Main Street. I guess I listened to everything you guys said, and I was curious about, I guess if the grant might include like a speeding sign that's lit by solar.
That's on the list.
That's, okay. And then, secondly, I also read, and I just wanted to ask if the village might be open to lowering the village's speed limit to 25 miles per hour?
It's something we can think about as we go forward with the review of comprehensive plan. That's always something that can, because it only became just recently possible.
Right.
This is not a village street, so they just changed that recently.
Right.
So we'd have to figure out that process and, yeah, it could be something to be considered.
Okay. Those were just two things I wanted to add.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. I don't see any more movement, so I'm going to move on to the agenda. Start with the agenda. Item number one, consider authorizing Mayor Dennehy to sign a renewal contract with CDP HP for health insurance for retired employees. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Michelle, second. John? And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy?
In favor. Item two is consider approval of Library Lights fundraiser to support the Altamont Free Library to be held on December 9th at 6:00 PM at the gazebo in Orsini Park per request of Joseph Burke Director. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Nick is first and second. Second is John. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy?
In favor. Item three, consider authorizing Jeffrey Muller, Superintendent of Public Works, to solicit bids for installation of approximately 761 feet of concrete sidewalk and related work along Fairview Avenue in the Village of Altamont. Bids will be opened on November 30th at 2:00 PM. This is the last half of the grant money we received for sidewalks on Lark and Fairview, so this is that Fairview portion. So can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Tressa, and second. Michelle? And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy?
In favor. Let's go to, item four is consider request of Phil Carducci, 35 Whipaway, to hold Altamont 5K Run Walk along the streets of Altamont on November 26th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Nick? And second. John? And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowitz?
In favor.
Trustee Ginnan?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Dennehy?
In favor. So the next item, I'm going to call 4.5 because it's not on your agendas this evening. We need to add an item here to the agenda and introduce a new local law for enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. This is something required by New York State. Allison, do you want to give a brief overview?[1627.41] to give a brief overview?
Sure.
Is it on?
She should be on.
Did it work? There we go.
Sorry, everybody. So the local law that the board's introducing tonight incorporates some new minimum standards that New York State has adopted through a rulemaking process. So basically how that works, the state does a rulemaking. They adopt new minimum standards for the uniform code. And then as a municipality, we're required to have a local law that administers those requirements. We do have a law like that on the books in Altamont already. It's chapter 150 of our village code. So we're just adopting some minor amendments to that chapter to incorporate the new standards that the state has adopted this most recent rulemaking. You know, some of the changes, they're, you know, really not too drastic. There's some more specific requirements for what's required on a building permit application. There are some new requirements as to what situations the building inspector is supposed to issue what's called an operating permit. But then there's exemptions where they would issue a certificate of compliance or occupancy for the same kind of use. So not much substantive change there. But they've also adopted some new broad standards for doing condition assessments on parking garages. We don't have any of those in the Village of Altamont, but it is now a statewide requirement that anyone who owns one of these facilities is required to do these periodic condition assessments that they then have to present to the village or the municipality where it's located. They also have some new minimum standards that are intended to address, you know, impacts of climate change, where they have identified specific code requirements, many of which are on the books already. Things like requirements for snow load on certain buildings or buildings being able to withstand certain wind speeds in particular locations, buildings in the flood plain. It just clarifies the responsibility of our building inspector to identify which of those criteria are particular to a certain building project in a particular location and make sure that those criteria are being met by that, that project. So the local law we've introduced tonight is just gonna make those minor amendments to incorporate these new requirements into our chapter 150. And the board has a resolution before tonight to schedule a public hearing on this local law for the December meeting.
Okay, so the resolution would be to consider holding a public hearing on December 6, 2022 at 7:00 PM on proposed local law number two of 2022 to adopt the New York State minimum requirements for enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. So could I have a motion? Michelle?
I'll second.
Tressa is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganis?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Danin?
In favor. And Allison, thank you for that summary. That was good. Can we go to item number five, which is consider approval of board minutes for October 4th, 2022? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
John is first and second.
I'll second.
Tressa is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Matulowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Ganis?
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Danin?
In favor. And before we go to item number six and consider that, and I think, Michelle, I kind of stepped on some, I did, I stepped on your news. So do you want to explain a little bit more?
So as everybody has heard, we're gonna be starting to organize a comprehensive plan review committee to start up in the new year. John and I will be working together to organize and start the committee, work out the details. You'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. But we're in the beginning phases of all of that. But we're gonna be working towards that for the new year.
Okay. And it's on our website. If you've never familiarized yourself with the comprehensive plan, you can actually just search it on the website and it pops right up. So you can see what we're talking about. So if you want to look at that traffic part ahead of time, there you go. You've seen it probably, right? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so item six is consider motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second, Nick, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Well, okay. Thank you all very much. Have a great night. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Michelle, were you first just now?
Yes.
Yep.
Ducky. Ducky is his name. He, well, I went to a trainer and Norman does everything perfect except for that. He won't eat till I tell him to. He lays down, rolls over, sits, stays, won't come when I call him. That's the only thing he won't do.